We should start. Right, I'd like to welcome everyone this evening to the Town Council meeting, the first one of 2021. Hopefully, the year is looking more promising, so let's be optimistic. The Mayor will allow a maximum of 30 minutes for members of the council to receive questions from registered electors of the town before the formal meeting commences. When providing your name and address prior to addressing the meeting, please confirm or otherwise that you consent to your personal details being recorded in the minutes. Your personal data will be processed as directed by GDPR Article 5. This meeting will be recorded and will be available on the Town Council's YouTube channel. The whole of the meeting will be recorded except where there are confidential or exempt items. If any member of the public has an objection to being filmed, please make yourself known to the Mayor or the Town Clerk before the start of the meeting. So do we have any questions from the public? councillor Saunders, you have a question?
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question as a member of the public, Madam Mayor. I think it would be helpful for all of the council to be updated. I wanted to ask the Town Clerk to give us a brief update on progress with the Faversham Town Lottery, please.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Well, we have identified over 100 good causes. I think it's about 135 at the moment that have been identified and emailed. And we've got 35 people signed up for our Good Causes Launch Event, which is on Friday, the 15th of January. Our ticket sales start on the 23rd of February, with the first draw being the 3rd of April. So we've made quite a few connections and we've just got the new website. It's not live yet, but I'm just going through checking that it's all okay. So if anybody's got any questions, I'm quite happy to answer.
No questions. Perhaps we just all need verbally to encourage people to take part.
Yes. I think that's what you all need to be doing now, is making sure that everybody's aware of it. If you've got community groups that you know, and you know, groups that you've given money to in the past, just make sure that they're aware of it. They don't have to attend the event on the 15th. That's just Gatherwell giving us information about the lottery, how to sign up. But it all seems quite straightforward. If you are a good cause, it's quite simple to sign up. It's free, you get a page, and I think it's all going to be quite straightforward.
Thank you. So we just need to spread the word. I think we could probably all do that, especially when we get more freedom and we can go out and talk to people, but that doesn't look like it's going to happen anytime soon. Right, so if there are no other questions, we can move on to the agenda. Apologies for this evening.
I haven't received any, but I know that councillor Hook is trying to get into the meeting, but he's got issues, so hopefully he will join us soon.
Thank you. Item two, declarations of pecuniary and non-pecuniary interests. Members who have an interest to declare on any item on the agenda must declare the existence and nature of it at the start of the meeting and in accordance with the council's Code of Conduct S27 Localism Act. We have councillor Ben Martin and councillor Hannah Perkin. Councillor Perkin. Right, so you both have councillor Martin.
Yeah, just on item seven, I'll declare it as a pecuniary because I might have to vote on it at Swale in terms of finalising funding, so I'll leave the room for the discussion of that item.
Thank you. And councillor Perkin?
Yeah, it's the same point as point seven, but it's a non-pecuniary interest as the Deputy Cabinet Member for Health and Wellbeing.
Thank you. Right, if we move to item three, previous minutes and matters to report.
I'm happy to propose that we accept those minutes.
Thank you.
I'm happy to second.
Councillor Martin and councillor Martin. Thank you. Can we all vote on that then? Thank you. Right, all in agreement. Thank you. Oh, Mayor's announcements. I'll make this very short, actually, very short. I'm hoping to maybe do the Mayor's blog because there is so much to say about last year. 2020 undoubtedly was a year like no other. That's definite. We need to acknowledge the sadness that COVID-19 restrictions has caused in our community to those that have lost loved ones over the year and to us that have lost some of our characters and personalities. Perhaps a commemoration and celebration of their lives during next year might be possible. Several people have said to me, what a year to be mayor. But actually, actually, it's been a very emotional year. It's given an opportunity for me not to be doing civic duties, but to going and finding out how this community works, how it was pulling together. And as I say, I will do the blog and I will list. I found it really emotional. It was wonderful going out around the community, our community that we live in, thanking so many individuals for doing things, the communities, who under normal circumstances, that wouldn't be an opportunity the Mayor would have. So for me, that's been an outstanding year to get to know our community. And I do believe we are all working together, us councillors, the staff, the community, and I get a real sense that there's been a real pulling together, which is a great thing to have happened this year. The week leading up to Christmas, very quickly, the National Tree Project, oh, what a great project, so well received. And of course, I had the opportunity going to all the schools and donating their tree, which they're all planting, and I hope to return next year, maybe put a plaque by the tree to say it was planted during the pandemic in 2020. And having visited every single one of our schools, I can honestly tell you, the commitment, the dedication, we are so fortunate in Faversham to have all the schools that we have. They are outstanding. Last week, just last week, leading up obviously the week before Christmas week, we had a Tombola store outside Number 12, we had the Cottage Hospital raffle. But what really impressed me, the talent we have in Faversham, oh my, I'm finding it and we need to celebrate it as soon as we can, with lots of celebrations. The Thorpe family, I don't know if any of you were in town, but as a family of musicians and singers, they were able to stand socially distant and they sang carols for two hours, and I mean very professionally sung carols for us and just turned up. It's amazing, things pop up all over this community. I've got an individual, he's 89, and he lives in a block of flats. And little things I've found out, and there are so many of them, but he donates £1 per flat, they don't have a Christmas card, he puts a lovely poster on their board, and he donates it to help the heroes. So that's £39. And he's done that, he thought, for maybe three years. When he checked with his bank, he's done that for six years. I think we've got many individuals in our town that are doing these smaller things which matter so much. And then when we were finishing the Tombola store, a young lady called Imogen arrived with a hand knitted scarf. Now, she's a 17-year-old at Quee, I think, and she came with this scarf all folded, looking for the young man who's been sat outside Number 12 for several weeks. He wasn't there. But the care, the compassion really made me emotional. She'd made him a scarf to keep him warm. We haven't as yet been able to get it to him because he hasn't turned up again. But if our young people, she's 17, is caring, and our elderly, Mr Huxley, is 89, we've got a whole community that is really caring and very compassionate, and I feel really privileged. I think, I don't think there's a mayor that is any prouder of their community than I am. So I found 2020 very, very rewarding in many, many ways. But of course, we're looking forward to 2021. It's looking promising. Obviously, we want to celebrate lots by the end of this year. But I want to finish by thanking all of you, you councillors, the staff, the community, have all done a fantastic job in 2020. So thank you. Right, we can move on to item five, which is neighbourhood plan steering group. Councillor Irwin, I think?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Two sets of minutes to present to this evening. One is from the 16th of November, which I discussed at our last meeting on 7th of December, but unfortunately there was an error actually in the minutes documentation. So those minutes are represented this evening for your approval and acceptance. There's also a set of minutes from a meeting we had on the 21st of December, and I'll just take a minute or two just to update you on the discussions during that meeting. So obviously, it was the last meeting of the year. And we reported on a number of items. There's no recommendations to carry forward, but a number of kind of updates which are probably worthwhile being aware of. We reported on two meetings, actually, three meetings we had with two of the developers of the large sites, which are indicated or will be indicated within the local plan. So we had two meetings with the Duchy of Cornwall. And then we had a meeting, which was our second meeting, with Mr Atwood, who is the owner and developer of the land to the east of Lovelane. We also have two meetings planned this week. On Wednesday, we have a meeting with Evis and Young, who are the agent of the landowner for Preston Fields. And then we have a further meeting, I think, on the Thursday with representatives of Prudential, who are the owners of the site on Gravely Road. So essentially, by the end of this week, we'll have made contact and had at least one meeting with the developers of those large sites. So those meetings, we are not recording formal minutes, but we take notes during those meetings, which are publicly, which will be available after those meetings, just so people can understand what was discussed. As you can imagine, the meetings are in very early stage. You know, this is a first to second interactions with these developers, so nothing substantive yet to report other than both landowners we've spoken to are engaged with us and are being very cooperative, which is a positive. The other thing which we discussed on the 7th of December was the call for sites. Just to make you aware that the call for sites is live, it closes on 31st of January. And the other important point of note, we have actually got some additional support to help us with call for sites. So we are being supported by an organisation called ACOM, who have been appointed by locality to support us. So this doesn't cost us anything, so no cost to the council. Essentially, we applied for support and we've been given support. So that meeting's tomorrow morning, ACOM. And essentially, they'll be providing the professional input we need to make sure our call for sites, but also the site selection process is completely transparent and appropriate. And last but not least, things to report on is the surveys. As you all know, household survey went out, that household survey, household surveys are now back, they're being analysed, and we expect to have some outputs by mid of January. I don't know if councillor Barker would like to say anything on that. But please don't feel obliged to do. So just the other thing in terms of...
Sorry, you're always on mute, so. And I was just saying, that pretty much sums it up. We're expecting the collated results of the residents' survey at the end of January, and we are hoping to push out both the youth surveys and business surveys in the next couple of weeks, so.
Thank you. So that's quite a big chance, and councillor Barker's been working hard on that for the last few months. So thank you, councillor Barker. And that is it. So what I'd like to do is propose that we, if there's no questions, of course, accept the minutes for those two meetings, the 16th of November and the 21st of December. Councillor Saunders?
Thank you. I note for the 21st of December, you had a discussion on the timeline for the project. Are you still confident that you can work to the timelines that you've proposed? And that will the plan be, you know, is it still practical for the plan to go out for the May elections?
No, I don't think it is realistic. So a revised timeline's been worked upon. I think one of the things that we, at the outset, we were keen to attempt to develop our neighbourhood plan, at least in parallel to the local plan. I think given the resourcing that's available to us, essentially, we'd have some professional support, but it's largely driven by volunteers, including members on this call. We're going to have to push the timelines out. We're keen to make sure we do it properly rather than rush it. And as you know, one of the big, big challenges for us this year has been community engagement. You know, we've certainly tried our best through exhibitions, through surveys, and through an open call for input and feedback. But realistically, if we are to succeed in developing a set of policies that people have had an opportunity to reflect upon and for us to engage people with, I think it would be, it would do a disservice to try to push it for May of this year. In terms of the detail of that timeline, it's something that's being worked on at the moment.
John, would you like me to offer a few words?
Yes, please.
As well, if I can. So the substantive work, I think, is likely to be completed by May, but the process involves a couple of periods of consultation and then both from Faversham Town Council and Swellborough. And then it obviously has to go for inspection before it can be put forward for a referendum. I guess there's no guarantee that the May elections will happen this year, although I guess we're all hopeful they will. But in my rough estimations at the moment, without kind of walking that through with the planning team at Swale, it's likely that we'll be in a position to have completed the consultations and hopefully work through any outputs of both those and the inspection by very early next calendar year. I suspect that that leaves us with probably having to fund a referendum, and it should be considered as part of the budget. Councillor Saunders, does that answer your question?
Yeah, that's very, very helpful. Thank you. That's a good update. Thanks.
Just to be aware, councillor Saunders, we will be publishing a revised timeline, but we do need to check with Swellborough Council planning in terms of the likely time it will take to, for instance, have their review and the external inspection. So we will publish that once it's available.
Thank you. Thank you. Can we accept those minutes? I had a proposal seconded. And if we can accept the minutes of the neighbourhood plan steering group. Thank you. I think that's everyone. Thank you. And we're on to item six, National Education Union. Councillor Perkins?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a pretty straightforward proposal. I'll just read through the main points of it for the benefit of anyone who hasn't been able to look at the agenda. There are still 17 million children of families on low incomes, some as little as £7,400 a year who don't qualify for free school meals all year round at the moment. As we all know, free school meals provide a healthy and nutritious meal for a child who might go the whole day without one, should they not be able to receive one. Families in receipt of universal credit are not automatically eligible for this support, despite many working families being on less than £20.50 a day. It's absolutely not right that any child should be too hungry to learn. And I propose that as a town council and as councillors, that we pledge our support and add our names to the National Education Union letter, which is available on their website to the government, stating that we believe all children on universal credit should be able to access free school meals all year round. I think it's especially pertinent with what is likely to happen this evening and with the ongoing restrictions around COVID and how it's impacting people's employment. So yeah, that's my proposal, and I'd welcome comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone like to comment or second that proposal? Councillor Thomas?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to ask councillor Perkin, is there a link for us to go to this petition to sign it?
Yes, I can happily provide that via email.
Lovely, thank you.
Thank you. Right, councillor Williams?
Just going to say, thanks, thank you for councillor Perkin for bringing that up. I'm happy to second the proposal.
Thank you. Can we vote if we're in agreement with that proposal? That's unanimous. Thank you. Item seven, I do think someone's leaving us. Councillor Perkin proposes the motion.
Yeah, thank you. So this is something that I've been supporting the Millfield Residents' Association with for a little while now, and I know other councillors in the call have as well. Basically, Swellborough Council have been successful in a bid for £24,496 from Viridor, which is less than they were hoping for, but it's still quite a substantial amount of money to go towards improving the play area in the Millfield Estate, which has been needing kind of upgrading for a while. It's not the best provision. To be able to access that funding, they need to be able to find a third-party funder. And I was hoping that the Faversham Town Council might be open to being that third-party funder. The total amount would be £2,449.60. And I'd like to propose that we consider being that third-party funder so that we can get the much-needed improvements to the park up and running. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Perkin. Could I just ask, I was asked to write a letter in support of this application, and I thought they were going for a much larger project, something like £89,000. And I also thought the Doris and Edward Vincent Fund were being asked to support it. I'm just wondering whether they did get any funding from there. Do we know?
Would you like me to come back on that?
Yes, thank you.
I'm not entirely sure whether they managed to get any money from the Edward Vincent Trust. That's not something I've been told. But the only information that I have is that they have been successful in gaining some funding from Viridor, but it is much less than they wanted originally. But it should go some way to being able to make quite a considerable difference. So I'm quite hopeful that the Town Council will be that third-party funder in that respect.
Thank you. Do we have any comments? Councillor Thomas?
Thank you. I just wanted for a bit of clarity to confirm that we're talking about the Borough Council here, and they've managed to get the money from Viridor. But what the Residents' Association are doing by way of their own fundraising could be a separate matter. Councillor Perkin can clarify that for us.
Yes, so the Residents' Association wrote to the Borough Council asking if they could look into improving the play area. Swellborough Council have therefore applied for funding through Viridor and have been accepted for that funding. The play, the Residents' Association could potentially be doing other fundraising, but it is a separate situation to this particular funding application.
Thank you. And councillor Saunders?
Thank you. I think I probably would like to declare an interest as the Deputy Cabinet Member at Swale for community safety. But in relation to the proposal, I'm sympathetic to the proposal. I must admit, in preparing for the meeting this evening, I hadn't realised from the wording of the motion that we were actually being asked to agree to making a specific financial contribution. I mean, the motion says that it's asking us to consider agreeing to be a third-party funder rather than specifying that we should give a particular amount of funding. I'm not clear what kind of budget this is coming out of, where we're at, where we've identified that we've got the funding. I mean, I know that we probably have got the funding, but I am a bit uncomfortable that, you know, when these, in any organisation I'm involved in really, where we have these kind of ad hoc suggestions for funding coming forward, and we're not looking at things in the round. So I'm not opposing this, but I do have some reservations about it as it's presented. And I would like to be told where it's proposed, what budget, what town council budget is proposed that this allocation is coming from.
Thank you. Councillor, councillor Hook would like to come in.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. First of all, just in general, I want to speak strongly in support of this proposal. This play area in the field in the central Millfield Estate has got huge potential to be...
I can barely hear.
I'm sorry?
Oh, that's better. Yes.
Is that better, Carol?
Thank you.
Thanks. I just want to say I strongly want to speak in support of this motion. The field in the centre of the Millfield Estate has got great potential to be improved. It's in the centre of probably around 200, I would guess, houses and a few flats on the Millfield Estate, it's a minutes' walk to Abbey Fields, it's a couple of minutes' walk to Whitstable Road and the Edward Vincent Estate. So it's really in a very short distance to, if you think of it, all of Faversham, east of East Street and the recreation ground. And at the moment, the equipment that's there is quite old, quite limited, and quite tatty in places. So developing it further will be great. And we're not being asked to write a cheque for the whole thing, but just to provide a bit of extra money, a fairly small amount. I suppose remind me what the exact figure, but it's fairly small, and that will unlock a much bigger supply of money from elsewhere. In terms of where we draw that from, I would propose we draw it down from the youth budget, which we've got quite a considerable unspent and allocated budget that we set aside for youth there, because this, developing this park and the field will help the whole community, but it will particularly help children and young people have a place to play and socialise in a safe way.
Thank you. Councillor Jackson?
Yes, although I think it's very worthwhile, there are other play areas in the town, and we will be taking it from all of the youth from budget if they apply in exactly the same tone or voice for funding to improve their areas.
Are you thinking Lionfield?
There's Lionfield, which is really dilapidated, which is in Watling Ward. There's over on Barnes Close, there's one there that used to be that now longer has. I mean, these are all areas that are very worthwhile, but I think we need to consider all areas because the recreation grounds had a lot of money spent on it, which is in that vicinity.
Thank you. Councillor Williams?
I think councillor Barker or Tom...
I think councillor Barker or Thomas was before me.
Oh, sorry, councillor Barker.
I'd like to speak in support of this motion. I think the budget, really, I'll leave to the town clerk and councillor Perkin. On the question of whether we should fund any other play areas, I think we'll deal with each one in the merit and whatever budget we've got left at the time, won't we? The only question that's been put in front of us is not whether we'll fund every play area, because none of the others are asking for it at the moment. It's whether one area that does require funding, we will support. And I think that's the question we need to answer, not future questions and future budget challenges.
Councillor Thomas?
Thank you. This money, my understanding, it isn't so much as funding, but it's a key to access funding. For some reason, my understanding is, correct me if I'm wrong here, that Viridor have asked the Borough Council to come up with a third party to put some money in. I don't understand the legal reasons for it, but that's why it's been asked for. So it's not actually funding the play park, it's just releasing the money. I was unaware of that. I'm sure we could get more information from the Borough Council, should that be necessary. The other thing I'd like to raise, just an information point of view, the Lionfield play area is being removed. They haven't decided what will go in to replace it yet. There'll be some form of open space. Thank you.
Thank you. And councillor Saunders?
Okay, I'm afraid I'm getting slightly more confused now. So are we being asked to allocate money from the town council's budget? Or is this some kind of commitment that we're making, which will kind of allow the release of funds? Again, because we haven't really been given much detail about this. I mean, it's now being proposed that it comes out of the youth budget. Well, it's clearly for children, as opposed to young people. I've not been involved in the youth kind of steering group. So I don't know what your plans are, and I don't know whether you're happy as a youth steering group to start giving up that budget for younger age groups. So, yeah, I suppose that's just further clarification really as to what we're actually being asked to agree to do here. And I would be interested to hear what other people involved in the youth group, you know, whether they feel it's an appropriate use of the money from that group.
Thank you. Councillor Williams?
Oh, yes. I'm just speaking in support. I'm not sure if anyone has seconded it, but I'd like to second it if not, just to kind of progress the debate. But basically, I just think as a ward member, as somebody who has spoken to the members of the community quite a bit, it is something that is very much in need. So as I said, I'm happy to support and to second this.
Thank you. Councillor Martin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think I know where we're going to, but I just want to make it to clarify. The town council are being asked to provide some mention, which was just over two thousand pounds, so that the Borough Council and Viridor's contributions will allow that project to go ahead. Now, in my opinion, that's a good thing to do. And also, if other areas were to come up with something whereby that funding was required, I'm sure we would consider it at that time. But as a particular community group has obviously done a lot of work to progress this to this point, I would hate to see an opportunity missed. So I will be voting in favour of the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Perkin?
Sorry, my mute button's been annoying. Councillor Saunders, I apologise. I probably should have sent the original email out when I suggested putting this motion on the agenda. I'm happy to forward that to all councillors, should they want to see it. It's really just, it explains a little bit of what I propose, which is essentially, it's a third party funding agreement. So the Faversham Town Council would agree to funding ten percent of the project, which is two thousand four hundred and forty nine pounds and sixty pence, which would mean that that would unlock the funding offer from Viridor, which is for twenty four thousand four hundred and ninety six pounds. So it's an agreement for the town council to become a third party funder to unlock the funding which has been agreed by Viridor. This will then go back to tender for agreement to the cabinet at Swale. So the proposal is for two thousand four hundred and forty nine pounds sixty. Where that comes from in terms of budget, I believe that the youth budget would be appropriate for that. I think there's been quite a lot of significant research into the accessibility of outdoor play spaces and how that impacts on people's mental health later in life, including being, you know, teenage years. So I think it's a logical funding pot for that to come from. I'm welcome, I'm happy to listen to other people on the youth community groups' opinions on that. But that's the proposal. It's for two thousand four hundred and forty nine pounds sixty as a ten percent stake in being able to unlock the funding from Viridor.
Thank you. Councillor Irwin?
Councillor Perkin, can I just ask how much Swellborough Council are putting into it? If we're paying ten percent of what Viridor are doing, what are Swell doing?
And Swellborough Council, as far as I know, are not putting any money into it. They've got a bigger project which is looking at the overall kind of the Swale picture for play areas in general. So there'll be some investment in play areas across the borough. This specific one has been accessed through Swale, but it's Swale applying for applying for an amount from Viridor as a donation.
Okay, so essentially it'll be funded if we agree by Faversham Town Council and Viridor. And Swale, I presume, are responsible for the upkeep and maintenance? Are they the second party to the agreement? Is that what they are?
Yeah, so Swale are the owners of the public site. That's why Swale are unable to fund it themselves because it would be a special interest for Swale as a council.
It seems like a reasonable thing to do, you know, who doesn't want more facilities for young children? And given that the youth group does have the funds, it's under spent, I think, as been mentioned several times, it would seem like a reasonable use of resource rather than just keeping it in the bank. So I'd agree with that.
Thank you. Councillor Saunders?
Thank you. I mean, as I said at the beginning, I'm not opposed to this. My impression is that there's broad support for this. Could we therefore amend the motion just to say that we will draw the money from the youth budget? And I think it would also be good if we could, in addition, say that we would be open to financially supporting play areas in other parts of the town in the future.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'm ready to second that amendment.
You're ready? Thank you. Councillor Hook?
I'm happy to accept the amendment as substantive.
Thank you. So can we, we've got a proposer, councillor Perkins, seconder was councillor Williams? Can we vote on that? I think that's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And move on to item eight, which is education in Faversham. Councillor Hook?
Thanks very much, Madam Mayor. I've been notified in my county councillor capacity by an officer of Kent County Council, and I don't mean nudge and win conversation, but official notification, which went to me and all of the county councillors of Canterbury, and I should imagine the county councillors of Swell East as well, that Kent County Council is proposing to meet needs for more secondary school aged places for children from a number of areas, including Faversham, by in the next school year, expanding a school in Canterbury, namely Simon Langton Boys School, by one form, so thirty students per year. And I've expressed my view in answer to that invitation for views, the consultation, that really it would be better to meet the need for secondary school aged places for Faversham young people by making those places at either or both of the schools, the good schools, because Ofsted say they're good, that we have in Faversham, which is Abbey School and the Queen Elizabeth's School. And this is not to make any criticism or comment about any particular school. It's not criticism of Simon Langton School. And it's certainly not seeking to open up the wider issue of whether selection in school is a good or a bad thing, because that's certainly outside the powers of this council and probably outside the powers of Kent County Council. I think it would need legislation and government action to do anything about that. But this is dealing solely with the question of do we make places for Faversham young people at Faversham Schools or at a boys' grammar school in Canterbury? And it's also not about saying there's anything wrong with some young people from Faversham going to Canterbury, because some already do. And I'm not saying that we should change that. If their parents think that one of the various different schools in Canterbury or somewhere else, some go the other way to Sittingbourne as well, I think, is the right thing for them, then fair enough. But it's about preserving the important option for our young people to be able to go to school within the town. And the advantages of that are considerable, both for the young people and for their parents. First of all, if they're going to school locally, it will mean it's easier for them to stay on after school and participate in extracurricular activities, whether that's sport or drama or music and other things. It would also mean that financial pressures won't be an issue in them doing that, which it can be more if they've got to pay for transport. And in general, if you look at the transport, that transport to school can be very expensive for some families now. I went to school in the nineteen nineties and I had to get a bus every morning from one town in Kent to another town in Kent, and it was free. The county council paid for it and for every child then who had to get public transport. They don't do that and they haven't done that for a long time. And parents now have to spend several hundreds of pounds a year on passes. So forcing more Faversham young people to go to school in Canterbury will put more financial pressure on their parents. It will put pressure on them in terms of a much earlier start in the day and a longer finish to the day. And it will mean that these young people, depending on their circumstances, and every family is different, may have a reduced opportunity, not just to participate in the extracurricular activities, but to see their friends from school and so on when they're outside of school. So I think there are many advantages, I'm sure colleagues will think of some other advantages, for the young people and for their parents in giving them as much option as we can to go to school in Faversham. Now, the bright news perhaps is that actually the expansion of both Abbey and QE is in the long term capital programme of the county council. But there's no particular date set, and in the current climate, when public sector finances are going to be under huge pressure once the pandemic is over, because the country will have a much greater deficit and the UK's national debt will be greatly increased. Until there's actually a shovel in the ground, in fact, I'll go further than that, until there's actually the finishing touches being made on new classrooms and people's able to use them, I don't think that can be banked upon. So I've expressed my view to the KCC officer that I really want them to prioritise growing places here in Faversham for Faversham young people. And in this motion, I'm asking for the town council to support me in that.
Thank you. Any comments from anyone? Councillor Saunders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would in a moment like to propose an amendment to this motion. I mean, I think it's a good motion and it's quite heartwarming to hear someone talk about the merits of young people at secondary level being taught in their local community, because I think it's something that disappeared out of education policy in the nineteen eighties. And I think it's something that we need to get back to. I think young people being able to be educated locally is not only dependent on being the buildings available, the classroom space available for them locally, but it also requires education policy which is geared towards and focuses on young people being educated locally. And really, over the last thirty years, particularly in a place like Kent that didn't benefit from the abolition of selection, education policy hasn't promoted that. So the existence of selection is totally counterproductive in young people being able to be educated locally. We all know that large numbers of young people in Faversham can't get into their local grammar school and in some cases, they end up going to grammar schools in other parts of Kent. When you're around the station at half past three in the afternoon, it's very apparent that large numbers of people are coming into Faversham to go to the grammar school. Parental choice allows parents to send their children all over the county. So rather than communities focusing on the quality of education in their local area, parents spend all their time trying to work out the best school to get their kids into. And the whole situation has been, the whole market kind of dominated approach has been accentuated by academisation, which is not so bad when it's an individual school. But once you start to get whole chains of schools with their own branding and so on, choosing your education for your child is a bit like going to the supermarket. So I think as well as saying to Kent County Council that we need to meet the need for school places for children by creating places at school in Faversham, we also need to say that we feel that Kent County Council should end its support for selective education and further academisation. I think councillor Hook is right that KCC couldn't easily do those things, but it could take a view that it's in favour of ending selection and in favour of putting a stop for this kind of constant growth in academisation. So I'd like to propose at the end of councillor Hook's motion, we add after around Faversham, by creating places at schools in Faversham and ending its support for selective education and further academisation.
Thank you. Do we have a seconder for that amendment? Councillor Jackson, you're seconding. Shall we vote on that amendment? Can we vote if we'd like that to be added?
We just have a debate about it.
Sorry, councillor Martin would like to come in.
Though I appreciate where councillor Saunders is coming from, I think it actually dilutes what we're trying to do on this particular motion. There's no surprise here that I'm not the world's biggest fan of selection. People know that anyway, but this isn't the time or the motion for that to go on. I think, to be honest, we're talking about, the county council have said they want to expand school places for boys. Let's be honest, they're talking about extending a boys' school to serve the people of Faversham, outside of Faversham. And actually, what this is about is saying that we want those places here in Faversham open to all so that there is choice for both boys and girls to have extended the place. there is choice for both boys and girls to have extended places in, in the town, be educated locally. It will have more benefits being educated locally in terms of the environment. You're not adding more car journeys on when the buses aren't running because of adverse weather or whatever. It will have benefits in terms of the education of young people. We know that teenagers biologically don't like mornings. It, it's not a fallacy. It's not a case that teenagers don't want to get up. It's that their biology says the morning is not the best time for them. So letting them get up a bit later so that they can attend school locally, rather than having to travel that hour earlier in the morning, is a benefit to them, both in terms of what they achieve at school, what they do at school, and in terms of their mental health and wellbeing. I think the motion as it stands is perfectly good. And I will be voting against the amendment because I think that will dilute the message that we're trying to send right now, despite the fact that I might support the sentiment of it.
Thank you. Councillor Jackson.
Yes, I'd like a recorded vote on this. And I also think it's a great opportunity to us to get it on to the map, that we would like a comprehensive system in Faversham. Thank you.
Thank you. And councillor Hook, did you want to come back in on that?
Yeah, I, I do. The, the body of evidence is that selection is not good for education as a whole. There's a very good article in the Financial Times from about 18 months ago, which, I recommend Googling it, which compares counties like Kent and Bucks that have selection to very similar counties like Berkshire and East Sussex and Surrey that don't. And East Sussex, Surrey, et cetera, outperform Kent and Bucks. And the evidence is that actually it has a fairly neutral effect on the most able pupil who go to grammar schools, but it has a negative effect on the other pupils. So the student body as a whole is negatively affected. And equally, I'm not massively in favour of single sex education. Having been to a boys' school myself, I think there's some negatives that come with that. And I think we're very lucky in Faversham that the grammar school we do have is, is mixed sex. But, but whether it's about selection or single sex education, we cannot change that, and nor can Kent County Council. And until there's a change of government, which won't happen for at least four years, with a, passes legislation to affect change, it's purely academic. It's, it's debating society stuff. And the urgent issue that is in front of us right now for children going to school next autumn is whether they go to school in Faversham or Canterbury. And that's the thing that we actually can have an impact upon. And the tactical risk is if we insert an, an opinion about selection or single sex education into this amendment, into this motion, is I know what Kent County Council's response will be. They will totally reject our views on Faversham or Canterbury for the school places. And they will say, oh, you see, this Faversham Town Council, they're just on the bandwagon, trying to have a go at the grammar school system and totally deflect and distract from what we actually want to achieve. Because they, they, they do it at other times. And there's fundamental problems with the way in which selection is done in Kent. And Kent has a report from its Enset Committee from approximately 2015, 2016, which made 30 odd recommendations for how it should be made fairer. And most of those recommendations have not been implemented. E- equally, there's an issue that Kent, like Bucks, contracts out the marking of its 11 plus to private companies who have kept the mark scheme confidential and hide behind confidential commerciality. Now, that is deeply unfair and should be challenged. But I can tell you, every time we raise the issue of the fairness in the selection system, then the education establishment in Kent tries to deflect and tries to say, oh, you're just on the bandwagon against the selection system in general. So I think we need to have the discipline to fight the battle that is in front of us now and which we could impact, rather than fighting the battle that we cannot impact for at least four years from now anyway, and would actually be a gift to those who want to plough ahead with expanding Canterbury at Faversham's expense. So with great reluctance, and whilst, you know, I, I welcome the intentions behind councillor Saunders's amendment, I, I can't support it for those, those reasons why. And I may say so, you know, I noticed councillor Jackson wants a recorded vote. Any suggestion that my opposition to the amendment equals support for the selective system would be wholly and utterly misleading. And I hope that's not why a recorded vote is asked for.
Thank you. And so really, we've now got the amendment by councillor Saunders, seconded by councillor Jackson. Could everybody vote on whether they support that amendment? Councillor Saunders, councillor Jackson. Two votes. Can we now vote?
You have recorded it.
Thank you. And can we now vote councillor Hook's proposal, which was seconded by councillor? Point, sorry, councillor Martin. So now could we?
Point of order, Madam Mayor, you need to do the against votes before, on the amendment before you move to the main motion.
I need to, sorry?
Take the votes against the abstentions.
Right, okay. Votes against the amendment.
And I abstain.
Thank you. Thank you. Now.
Sorry, could you just keep your hands up for against, please? I'm just trying to get everybody's names. Just bear with me a moment. Thank you. And then could we have abstentions?
Yeah. Who was abstaining? Councillor Perkins, councillor Hook.
Councillor Barker.
And councillor Barker. Three abstentions. Right. And now we can vote on the proposal, which is being proposed by councillor Hook, seconded by councillor Martin. Can the rest of us please vote? Yes, we're all, that's pretty unanimous, actually. Thank you. Right, we're on to item nine, Christmas volunteers. Councillor Williams, I think you wish to speak on this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll just, I'll read out the, the motion and I'll just give a bit of clarity. So my, my motion is to Faversham Town Council would like to say thank you to residents and businesses in Faversham for their kindness and generosity, volunteering time over Christmas and donating food, water and essentials to the lorry drivers forced to spend Christmas in their lorries on Kent roads with little or no provisions otherwise provided. So I just wanted to sort of use the opportunity to make how I feel and why I did this motion, because obviously, you know, some may argue and say this is quite distant from us, but it does affect Faversham. And so that these, these lorry drivers, drivers are visitors to the UK, carrying out essential work to bring goods to our businesses and contributing to our economy. Feel angry to how the UK government handled and treated the lorry drivers and indeed other people travelling through. However, feel heartened that residents of the Faversham community and businesses stepped in where the government failed. This shouldn't be the case, but sadly it is. We've seen throughout the pandemic that community is strengthened and people selflessly help those in difficult, vulnerable situations. Those that I've spoken to that have helped the lorry drivers did so to at least provide some comfort and basic provisions for what was a pretty miserable Christmas for us. Residents took supplies of fresh and long life foods and toiletries, many purchased out of their own pockets or with community donations. Businesses donated foods, drinks and other provisions, working with partners such as Network Rail in Ashford and Kent Police. I won't name the businesses or the individuals because I may be risked to miss them. And so I'd just like to thank all that did so over this Christmas break. And this really highlights what a fantastic community Faversham is. So I hope that this council can vote on the facts of, of saying thank you to the community for this.
Oh, absolutely. I'd second that, councillor Williams. And it is so good when you bring these things to us, which is what I said earlier, my year of going out around our community has shown me little things are happening all over. We should be really proud of Faversham, really proud. So I would second that. Can we all vote on that? Unless any other comments? We have a fantastic community in Faversham, absolutely fantastic. Thank you. I think that was unanimous. Right, we can move to item 10. Thank you for bringing that, councillor Williams. And receipts and payments to resolve the, an approve, the payments and receipts, which we got earlier. Councillor Barker.
Can I propose we accept the receipts and payments?
Thank you. I'm happy to second that, having looked at them earlier. Could we vote? Or unless there's any other comment? We're all voting?
Just a very quick comment, Madam Mayor. It's purely, I know, when you look at the main list, which is the one that's likely to go on the website, it says one face mask at £85. To, to be clear, that was one pack of 20, 20.
20 face masks, not one individual.
But I don't want anyone saying that we've spent £85 on a single face mask.
No, quite, quite. That would not be good. Well done. Right. But are we all in favour then of the payments being accepted? Yes, we are. Thank you. Right. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for the input. And let's, yes, all keep going now, 2021. We're just off to see what Boris is now announcing. I can hear, my hear is on the television now. So it won't be good, but we can keep going. Faversham, very positive. Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Thank you.